Three's City Council Committee of the Whole Public Safety and Human Services meeting. Today, joining us are our council members Fields, Critzer, Forsythe, Stewart, and Ms. Khan is joining us online. Mr. Carson will not be joining us this afternoon. And I am Geraldine Anderson, Presiding Officer for today. We are joined by our lovely staff of the Planning Department as well. And we have six, seven items on our agenda this afternoon. The first item is the update to the Bike and Scooter Share Pilot Program. And we'll be with Seraphie Allen and team.
Thank you. Seraphie Allen, Deputy Director for Planning and Community Development. The Transportation, Planning, and Engineering Team is providing council with an update on micro mobility, which is also known as the Scooter Share Pilot Program, which began, some of you may remember, in May of 2019. The last time council was updated was in June of 2021. We are providing an update to council on the current status of the pilot. And for that, I will turn it over to Banji.
Evening. And again, I am Banji Garcia, the Transportation, Planning, and Engineering Manager. And with me is Francesca Liberty and Kim Keeling. Between 2019 and 2023, today, over 114,000 people have taken over 187,000 total completed trips in Redmond. The pilot program was limited to one vendor, which is Lime. And Lime has only operated scooters until July 2023, when 20 bikes were introduced. The program has received 208 customer service requests thus far, which was higher at the beginning, and everybody was learning the program. And requests have dwindled to almost zero during this time. City staff have established processes with Lime to mitigate the number of service requests and increase service response time, such as developing direct access for one community member to report any concerns to Lime and implementing geo fencing to improve parking practices. The ridership data shows that the program is utilized as a viable first-last-mile connection. At the study session in September, we will review the proposed permanent permit program, lots of P's, and how vendor will be chosen through an RFQ process. And today, we would just, we will be back next week. So I'd like to hear what else you would like to, for us to bring back.
Council questions for the team to bring back at our study session next week. Ms. Forsythe?
Thank you. I will share that at Derby Days, I did have one person come up to me and questioning whether the pilot program was still a pilot and share their dismay at people nearly running them off sidewalks. So again, I know this, it has diminished in the years that we've had the pilot program, and people have been much better about it. Just wanted to share that feedback that I received. For information that you could bring back that I'd be interested in, have we had any injuries from folks? And more information about how the parking has gotten better, I know we have the geo fencing. And I see on the total scooters deployed, we have a number of 154,598. And that seems like a lot of scooters. Is that the amount of scooters that are out there currently or just over time? Okay. How, and then so maybe information when you come back, how many are actually on the ground at a given time would be interesting to me. Thanks.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Critzer?
I really appreciate you bringing this item and the information to us. And I think I'll have to look back too, because I think we had a couple really useful data points the last time that we saw this. And to just, just to make sure we get kind of the update, I think one of them was on the safety statistics, since that's a question that we get. One question on the reporting, I know we do have a really active resident who likes to share with us about that. And it sounds like you all found a way for them to be able to kind of have more active connection there. Do we have something, have we heard from a lot of other members of the public or created a portal that's more than just that, that kind of customized one for that resident to be able to get that feedback more? Because I see you have the data on, on service requests, but I'm not sure if that includes...
Everyone.
Oh, that includes everyone. Okay, cool. Well, I guess maybe one thing that we'd want to look into, I guess as a question, if we're going to go forward and look at a policy, a permanent policy would be what it looks like to just advertise to people who do have concerns about it, like how they can put in those service requests, because it may be the people who have those don't know exactly how to report. So I think that's helpful. But it is exciting to see the usage of this, and I look forward to the discussion. One question for a future, I don't know if it fits in this discussion that I'm wondering about, because I have seen a lot of other cities with now e-bikes, and maybe it's a follow-up to this program, is I know we had looked into bike share back when we started this, and most of the companies said it was not financially feasible for them to do a bike share with us at the time. And I know a lot of those companies have now upgraded even Lime to also having those e-bikes. And whether that's something that we could look at as an additional mode of shareable transportation in the future. We want to like go out to bid again, since new companies have come on the market, since a couple of years ago, I think it was pre-pandemic that we got those like quotes. And I think that market's just changed so much in this time.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question? Are you saying that you want both the type, like the types of the e-bike, as well as the kind of program, like in terms of sharing versus just the Lime model right now?
I think what I'm saying is, it seems like the scooter share overall from the initial data we're having here has been taken up widely. I've actually used it myself, and I think it's, it's great to have that first-last-mile piece supported. Some people may feel more comfortable on bikes, which I think was a discussion that we had early in this process. So, but at the time, it seemed like bikes weren't really an option, because nobody wanted to bid on doing that for our city. So I guess my only, my question is just whether we want, whether there's any feasibility if we went back out after we finalized the scooter into a permanent program to look at doing like a pilot bike share to add even more multimodal options in our city.
I can ask. Our permit, which is still a pilot, but the way it was written is for, it has already accounted for bikes and scooters. So it was already written for it. So we can have that discussion next week.
Very cool. Thank you. Ms. Stewart?
Thank you. And thanks for mentioning that the bikes were just deployed in July of this, because I was looking around thinking, have I not noticed this whole time? But definitely in the last week or two, have seen more...
So just 20.
Okay, yeah. So I've seen more of the bikes, especially downtown. Thank you so much. None of my technology is working, so I can't get into the notes about my questions. So I'm going to follow up with you via email. Thank you.
Mr. Fields?
Thank you. So there's a thing that tennis coaches say, you hit a shot, and they say, was that a good shot? And you say, I think so. And they say, where were you aiming? And, because you can't really tell if it's a good shot unless you know where you're aiming. I am not still clear on what we're trying to achieve with both the bicycle and the scooter programs. And in particular, who's riding them, who's meeting some of the values that we've talked about, first and last mile, reaching those groups of people who really need that transportation mechanism from an affordability perspective. So will you be able to talk about those broader goals? And then I think I can take statistics and say, did we, are we achieving what we hope to achieve? So that's what I look forward to. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments for next week? And we don't need to answer the question of, do you need a study session, right? We're good. We're on the schedule for that? Perfect. Well, thank you very much.
And just a reminder, we're going to be here next week, but then we'll be back in September.
With more. Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for joining us today at Public Safety. All right, next up is Human Services Strategic Plan Update. And I think this is also with Deputy Director Allen and team, and Brooke Buckingham.
And I will just automatically... Hello? Okay. I will just automatically turn it over to Brooke here.
Good afternoon. I'll just have my laptop open to use the closed captioning. But I'm just here to provide an update on where we are with our Human Services Strategic Plan. I know we have a packed agenda, so I'll try to be brief and answer any questions or comment on anything that you see in your packet. But as you may recall, we, council approved this plan about a year ago. It's a five-year plan, so we do have time to complete the activities. And it's structured under five goal areas. So I really just wanted to touch base on a few items that we're excited about. All of these activities are listed in Attachment A. They're color-coded, and I think the color coding is pretty straightforward. But green are items that we've completed. Yellow are the items that are underway. And then red are items that we have scheduled for future time based on staff capacity. So some of the things that we have been doing is recently, we just worked with our Human Services Commission to adopt what we call a fund balance policy. And it's different than a reserve fund, but this is funding that is either unexpendated at the end of the two-year biennium. And we end up incurring a little bit of a reserve, but it's what we call a fund balance. And we typically use that for any agencies that may be seeking city funding outside of a grant process for an emergency request. So for example, Overlake, Crichton Church, Safe Parking used this process to renovate their locker and shower facilities for the Safe Parking residents. So we wanted to really update that policy and also take into account that when that fund balance grows significantly, there may be other processes that will use to draw down those dollars. So the commission approved that policy, and that was really responsive to something we identified in our plan. The other thing that came out of conversations and really intentional collaboration with teen center staff, so we have monthly meetings with Jeff and Tori. And one thing that they identified, I believe, a little over a year ago, was the increasing need that they're seeing with mental health for the kids that were visiting the teen center. We had YES council there many years ago, and that was not being utilized. So we disbanded that program. When we heard that feedback, we encouraged YES to apply for city funding. And so that was recently reinstated. Took a little bit of time to get a staff resource there, but we're very excited to have a half-time person who is at the teen center. So those conversations are really critical to kind of hear that on the ground, what they're seeing, and how we can be supportive and respond to that. So in last week's E-City newsletter, or actually yesterday, this week, excuse me, we had a video of homeless outreach and just again, trying to tell the community what they can do, how they can be part of the solution, and address hand handling and other alternative ways to give money or to support people who may be asking for money. So that video is published, and just to remind the community that again, TESA is doing fabulous work in our community and really supporting those who are unhoused. And we, we really wanted to kind of track and see, so we added a Q Alert code for homeless outreach about a year ago, so just kind of supporting what we're seeing. And have received about 25 calls through Q Alert. So I don't know if that means we're doing our work well, or if it just means that the community is not aware that they can contact the city through Q Alert if they see something and need support. One thing I'm very excited about, just I love technology. So we, for many years with outreach, have been using a spreadsheet, tracking on contacts on this spreadsheet. It's, we're able to report on that. But we really thought, okay, let's take ourselves in the 21st century and implemented software through Apricot platform. And we'll be migrating all of our data in the Apricot platform. So it's not only allows us to track how much time we're spending with clients, but even just kind of measuring the impact, what we're seeing, the types of referrals, and really have some of our best data for what we're doing. And City of Kirkland recently hired a homeless outreach person as well, and saw a great synergy to join forces with us. So that platform will really be able to say, okay, here's what Redmond's doing, here's what City of Kirkland have shared metrics for success. So more to come on that. And finally, another project with the commission is that we were tasked with coming up with an alternative scenario for a per capita formula. So we'll be coming back to council in November for a joint study session. Been working very closely with the commission to say, okay, what is the right size amount for a per capita formula, taking into account that recent year, some of the one-time funding and how we might be able to roll that in, the needs that we're seeing in the community. So that's just a quick rundown. There's a lot of activities. We do have time to, I have to remind myself of that, we have a few more years to complete some of the things identified in our plan. But with that, I just will open it up for questions that you may have.
Any questions from the council from Ms. Buckingham? Ms. Forsythe?
Thank you. And thank you for the incredible work. It's a lot of work, and it's, looks like a great plan so far. I have two questions. First, has our DEI manager, Ms. Harrison, been able to give this, a look over in policy ideas?
She had not. So that would be an opportunity to connect with her. We do have an action in there to, some of our work does align with the DEI efforts and really expanding into a more welcoming, obviously, looking at this with an equity lens. So thank you for that feedback.
Absolutely. And you mentioned the new data platform, Apricot. How is privacy of the, the people that are being put into that system addressed? And do we need to create any policies at the council level to ensure quality for their privacy?
So that, even the procurement at Apricot was a pretty intense process internally, with IT very aware of HIPAA and privacy. And so there's, in IT world, there's different certifications of how they keep data secure. And they, they pass that bar. Apricot is something that's utilized by a lot of nonprofits. I believe City of Portland uses it. So we had kind of other places to look to that were equally invested in making sure that the client data would be private. And it isn't, it didn't, we're actually being careful about what type of data we keep in the system, given that we are unique with public records requests. And so we're aware of that as well.
Thank you.
Good questions. Any other questions from the council? I see Ms. Critzer before Mr. Fields, sorry. She wins.
Thanks for all the work on this. One, one question that I've read up a couple times, and I think I see it in here under the fourth goal, is just, is the work that we're doing to figure out what kind of staffing that we need to be able to support this program? And I, I'm wondering, because I know you said that you're working with the commission on looking at right sizing, right sizing the formula that we use to discuss how much funding there is. But are you doing, I see it's 2024 for that conversation, but is there any kind of pre-work going on on that and to determine? It seems like we have kind of kept the same size, small but mighty staff working on this, even as we've grown as a city. So I guess I wonder whether those two conversations go almost hand in hand as we think about that.
So yes, and that will be our next conversation, will be one of the things that we're noticing. We are having a part-time FTE that was limited duration that will be ending. And so already, they've had quite a bit of capacity work. And so that is one of the things we'll be talking about in the next item. And then for 25, we, sorry, the reason why we have it in 24 is because of the budgeting cycle of 25, 26. So we're doing kind of that assessment now, so that we can come forward with a proposed package if needed. But the immediate need is the work that TESA is doing on our homeless outreach work. And so you'll be hearing about that next.
Yeah, great. And I'm looking forward to that conversation. And I just do want to recognize both Brooke and Alaric for the amazing work that they do in their capacity on, on human services as well. Obviously, TESA does an amazing job as well. But in terms of supporting, working with our community groups, working with our commissions, it's pretty incredible in the two-person team. So just wanted to recognize that.
Mr. Fields?
Thank you for the questions. Well, Councilmember Critzer asked the main part of my question. I know that two years ago, when we did the budget, this was an issue. Did, did you have the resources, staff resources to see this through? The only thing I would add to the question that Councilmember Critzer asked is, is there an alignment? I see your schedule, and I see the color coding, and I appreciate that. But time and resources sort of go hand in hand. So I would like to see, are there any risks to that schedule because of lack of resources? So...
So, I mean, if I actually did complete this, it would be, be done early. So it's probably too ambitious. I heard somebody say that you should over-deliver and under-commit. But I thought, that's actually really smart. So I, I think that, you know, there are some items in here that were pretty ambitious, that were identified in the plan. And so the actions, I'm trying to bite, have bites, like pieces for the action. So explore the feasibility, and just think about like what's that next, kind of next step, maybe not implementing a program, but exploring the feasibility. So it, it is ambitious, and we are just trying to utilize and think about other ways and partners that we can bring in to have these conversations. And one of the recent introductions that we had with, with Lake Washington Tech, where they have an internship program, but you know, thinking about creative ways. But you know, that's also a little bit of capacity concern and just managing interns. But you know, just trying to think creatively about how we can do this work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Stewart doesn't have her notes yet.
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you so much. And we'll be moving on to the next item, but I bet you're going to stay, stay with us for this. So the next item on our list is the Community Health Through Thrive update. Oh, Ms. Buckingham is leaving. Thank you. Supporting from behind. Okay, great. Thank you. I think we have a giant team for this one up here. We are joined by COO Files and Chief Shepherd and Chief Lowe. Welcome.
Thank you. And we have additional members of the team behind me that I will vacate my seat and let them have it once I'm done. I am going to share the PowerPoint presentation with you that was in your packet, just so that the public can see it. There we go. So thank you again for having us this afternoon. We want, per the budget discussions that you had in November, we wanted to come back to you with some recommendations that we have of continuing our community health program and enhancing our Thrive program. So, you know, really, this is a continuing effort to promote the physical, mental, and overall well-being of individuals in our community. And so you will hear from the team, some recommendations that we have, and a discussion with council of what the next steps are. We have pretty specific recommendations. So if you want to approve them to go to council, we would love that. But if you need more time to talk about it, well, we can discuss that as well. And so I'm going to turn it over to Chief Lowe for his introductory comments, and then the team will continue on.
Good afternoon. As you know, this has been an ongoing conversation and project through this particular budget cycle. The presentation that we have for you here today is as a result of the work that's been done by all components of Thrive and what we believe are the best steps moving forward for us to be able to address this concern from a community health perspective. A lot of the conversation initially centered around alternative police response, but it's more complicated and nuanced than that. We have programs in place in the city that takes a holistic approach to it. And the presentation and our, and our recommendations are consistent with what we believe is the best steps moving forward for us as a city to continue serving the community.
Great. Thank you, Chief. And I'll take it from here. Good afternoon. Fire Chief Adrian Shepherd. So we're going to talk a little bit about the components of the Thrive program. The Redmond Thrive program is a comprehensive initiative aimed at strengthening the community and addressing various needs. The program is an innovative approach to problem-solving and utilizing city resources effectively. And its purpose is to provide safety, stability, opportunity, and hope to individuals in need. Some of the program's components include the Homeless Response Program, the Mental Health Professional and Police Partnership, or MHP, Mobile Integrated Health, Alternative Court, fund and support for nonprofits, human services, senior and teen services, and we have an opportunity for volunteers from our community. So that's just a brief overview of the components of the program. And with that, I'll turn it over to Seraphie.
Thank you, Chief. Very sorry, everyone. So I just wanted to give a little bit of background. So this group here, as well as the group that you're seeing behind, has been getting together for the last several months and discussing about the resources that council had allocated and how to best use them. And so we dove into the data that we had between the different teams. And then we talked about what the greatest needs were between our teams, and we'll go into that a little bit more later. But we then were like, well, we need to take a step back and actually talk about what is our mission and our values overall with this group. And so I'll just say that Jim is an excellent writer. And so we all had our versions, and his was the best. And I was like, do you want to come work for planning on Redmond 2015? So, are we okay, Chip? Okay. There we go. Do you want me to wait?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I'm breaking it. Okay, thank you. So just to go back, so as Melissa and the chiefs mentioned earlier, this team worked together. So while the Thrive program, we determined through this work, was a good first step in combining our departments' efforts, we believe there is a clear desire for further collaboration and a larger kind of community need that's not being met due to our limited capacities, such as what you were talking about earlier. So there was, overall, with what we reviewed, there was broad agreement in this group about how important our work on the upstream measures are and how that impacts the calls that come into 911 through. So for example, you know, TESA's work is helping to limit the amount of calls that would come in to 911. And she's also responding to people that aren't just calling in the 911 system, but are facing like housing insecurity or an eviction that could turn into a 911 call, but is able to meet that at the upstream level ahead of time. So I will actually switch to the next thing. Oh, oh, no. Where'd it go? Okay. Oh, the other items that this group discussed was what we learned from other jurisdictions. So each one of us kind of took on researching different cities. And I've actually done quite a bit of this work in Portland, so was able to share about the work that I had done there. So we looked at Santa Fe's Alternative Response Unit, Eugene's Kahoots Program, and some other ones. And again, when we came back to the data that we're seeing, we noticed that the greatest need that we have in Redmond is more on the follow-up and less on that, like immediate first response. And so that is where our recommendation kind of came from, was through this conversation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tim, who can help go through the data that we analyzed.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to be here. And good afternoon. So I think that what's super important is to recognize that we have incredible teams already that are doing the emergent care in the field. And Seraphie said it well, is that what we really need to focus on is, is the downstream, or how we stop always having to focus on the downstream effects. And really, what can we do on the, on the backend that can support us upstream, so we stop seeing the, the people utilizing the 911 system for emergent care? So the, as we went through the data and really looked at it, the vast majority of the work that all the, the staff within the city of Redmond are doing in these different, in these different arenas, is really about wraparound care. It's about taking care of the patients on the backend, finding solutions for them through resources that'll help them get to a place of independence in life and not have to continue to draw on the system and, and put a continued impact on how the impacts on the city itself, the impacts on 911 services. It's truly not about forgetting about the emergent care, but it's recognizing that we have we have tools there now that can support that, but rather identifying solutions of long-term independence for the individuals. This proposal meets the needs that increase staff hours both for PD, fire in the MIH arena, and court, the city of Redmond's Human Services Group. We have often seen issues that it's very evident that during emergent times, the issues that we're seeing are really truly not the issues that are impacting those individuals in their long-term care. If we can tie in with them after the emergent care is over, so allow them to go to the hospitals, get the care they need at the hospital, circle back with them 24 hours to 48 hours later, and connect with them with our teams, and really identify what is the issue that's causing the crisis in the moment. And the crisis could be mental health. It could be housing insecurity or homelessness. It could be senior aging disabilities within the home, and the list goes on and on. So everybody's a little bit different. It's none of it's the same, we don't see the same picture over and over again. One treatment plan doesn't work for every individual. It's really has to be tailored for the individual. What this does is it requires frequent engagement with those individuals, identifying their needs, and then identifying the appropriate resources that are oftentimes outside the city of Redmond, but resources that are available through the tri-county complex and maybe at the state level and nationally even, that we can draw on to help support those individuals based on their needs and their plan. Many, what we've also identified is many of the clients that we are seeing across the work group within the city of Redmond are shared clients. They're people that are experiencing homelessness, mental health. They're also experiencing individual health issues that if we get the right resources in play, again, not necessarily within the city of Redmond, but outside the city of Redmond to support them, we can eliminate the need for them to continue to draw on the emergency services. But that takes time. And that's the reason for the ask for staffing, right? We are recognizing that as the city is growing and we're seeing more and more impacts internally, that those staff hours are going up to really identify the appropriate resources, connect those individuals to them, and then not only that, but circling back to make sure that there's compliance and sticking to the plan and compliance with the resource, continuing to communicate with the resources that have been found for them and continuing to work in a place that can support their health. Bottom line is acquisition and connection to the resources is the goal. And getting them connected to the appropriate resources that will support them long-term and then having our teams locally here within the city of Redmond making those connections, but then continuing the follow-up to make sure that they stick with that plan with the ultimate goal of independence for them, to be in a place where there are limited impact to those individuals and limited impact to our resources within the city. Now I'll stop there and take questions as they come.
Okay. Thank you. Brian Coats, your police captain. Good afternoon. I'm here to kind of give you a brief overview of the budget behind this project. If you'll recall from the 2324 budgeting process, council had approximately $900,000 from a renegotiated contract to allocate as you so chose. You took about half of that money, or a little over $460,000, to allocate towards two full-time, what we are referring to as community care coordinators, to support the overall community health program. The other half of that $900,000 approximately, you put in a public safety contingency. And with that money, Chief Shepherd has chosen to allocate enough funding to support an additional FTE in the community care coordinator arena, given us three total. On top of that, there was an additional $35,000 that was allocated towards consulting services for an overall budget for this community health program of $905,000. Then to bring it home, we have a recommendation, and as you've heard, this team has worked very hard and have met several times to come up with what an overall community health looks like for the city of Redmond. And the recommendation of the committee sitting before you this afternoon is to hire three full-time community care coordinators responsible for handling the follow-up response for the members of Thrive. We recognized early on that adequate follow-up and continuity of care were areas that needed, definitely needed additional resources. We are looking into identifying a confidential workspace for all members of Thrive, including the community coordinators, easy for me to say, to have a shared workspace, share information, share client data, and collaborate and have them all in one room on a rather routine basis. From a technology standpoint, you heard a little bit earlier from Ms. Cunningham about shared, basically, data processes. They have Apricot for human services and for MIH, they use Gelata. And for MHP, we use the Spillman RMS system. So getting one shared database for all to use was identified as a high priority. A lot of people get services from different elements of Thrive and from resources in King County. And right now, there is no means to share that information. And lastly, just to wrap it up, we are aware of there's a lot of resources within King County outside the city of Redmond. And these resources would continue to be utilized by members of the community health team. And with that, we are happy to take your questions.
Great. Questions from the council? I'm sure there will be many. Who wants to kick us off? Oh, Stewart.
Technology is working. Thanks, everybody. And thank you so much for all of the work that has gone into this so far. I guess one of the things I am interested in kicking off the conversation with for my colleagues is it does feel like a really thoughtful solution to a problem that is different than the one that we left off the conversation with when we had spoken in the budget process and the public safety levy process. We had a lot of talk about, actually not community care coordinators, which I'm going to refer to as case managers, but rather the interventionists, the behavioral health support specialists who would respond in time. So it just feels like a very different, we're in a different place in the conversation now. So I look forward to this conversation, but also want to acknowledge that it is maybe a little bit different than where we left off. So I love, love, love the co-location idea and that that is something that, it sounds like you all have been working together and you enjoyed working together enough that you would want to continue to do, and you saw benefit in it. And so I love that piece for sure. And interested in where the conversation goes from here. I certainly think that the value of the case managers is something that would be so difficult to measure, but would save the city so many resources down the line potentially. So it's an interesting piece of the conversation, but a bit different than where we left off before. So that was my main thought.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Ms. Kritzler?
First, a follow-up question on that, because I'm trying to understand a little more about the vision for these positions that you're proposing. Would they be doing both the proactive response to emergency calls coming in as well as doing that case management follow-up or just the case management follow-up?
What we found is that the vast majority of responses that we currently see are follow-up, I should say are contacts with people, are follow-up responses. That doesn't, that's not to say that we don't have initial responses in the field when there's a need. It's, but there's a, and those take place both from fire police as well as human services in connecting with clients. Those same clients are the ones that we spend lots of time connecting with after the fact. And to really make the, find the solutions that will be best to solve whatever, again, whatever the issue may be for that individual, that takes time. And it takes time in interviewing them and sitting with them and identifying those issues. Oftentimes, that can't happen in the emergent environment just because they're not ready to engage at that level. So it's best to circle back and do that, like I said, sometime later, whether it's 24 hours or 48 hours. But it's not one sitting either. It's multiple sittings to really identify what those issues are and what the needs are. And then following up with resources that are available outside of the city of Redmond that are most adequate subject matter experts to help them in solving those issues. And again, it's broad spectrum, right? It could be aging disabilities, mental health, housing insecurities, homelessness, substance abuse, and everything just keeps coming, as teens, seniors, there's so many different aspects. Those resources exist, but they're not readily available to the individual or they don't know how to reach them. And what we become is a conduit essentially to that with these resources. And what we have now, our teams do it well now, but they're overwhelmed in time.
So I think maybe just to put a finer point on that, too, you saw on the screen that we are currently responding to calls. And then, but you see the difference in what they're responding to. So they could, but we already have our staff that are responding right now. And so they would continue to be the primary responders to when there's a need for 911 calls. And really, we're hoping that these folks can help support the team that is already doing that with more of that follow-up caseload.
But they'd be trained, because I know we had heard from Ms. Kroll that, or just in looking at the data, when we were looking at the public safety levy, that obviously she takes a large number of calls and it seemed like there needed to be some extra support for that. So these positions would still be trained to be able to help support with those emergent calls as well? Is that correct?
They could be trained. I think each division is going to maybe treat the person that they're bringing on a little bit differently. So for like Suzie's team, she probably will be having someone that's going to be supporting her more. With Teesa's work, maybe we'll defer to her, but that might not be where she's seeing the highest priority of where she needs that person trained. But we will provide some amount of training so that when Teesa's off, they'd be able to respond as well.
Great. Thank you. And I will just say, I have quite a lot of questions about this. I think, first of all, just thank you all for the work you've done. I wish I could have been a fly on the wall for all your brainstorming conversations and love the idea of this coming together of the minds and this thoughtful proposal. I would just say for council that this seems like a study session item to me, not taking up all the committee time with our many questions. So I would propose, if council members are good with it, even though I want to make sure we move forward with this, that we do have the time to be able to ask the questions and add input to the proposal in the right time, so.
Just to clarify on that, so your request is for a study session? And we came to with the agenda today for a TBD, what the request would be? Is that one of the options that you were looking for as an outcome today? Study session? Or do you need action on this item?
We can go to a study session.
Okay. Fantastic. So then that will be you two ladies over there. Awesome. Thank you for that comment. Now that we have a bow on that item, we can move on. Ms. Forsythe?
Thank you. Given that we are going to have this as a study session item, I can hold a bunch of my questions for that time. But I guess I did want to ask one major burning question that I have. Our initial conversations were about ensuring that we had 24/7 coverage for this element of our services. How does that, this as proposed, get us closer to that goal?
So I'll speak to that briefly. The, we currently have response units that are available to us to handle emergent response 24 hours a day. The city of Redmond is not at a place that would be able to support 24/7 service in my mind. I mean, we certainly could do it, but fiscal responsibility is that we address the backend of these. We allow the emergency crews that are there to do the work that they do with the occasional call-outs of resources when they're needed, but really, really focus our efforts on resources and sustainability of independence for the individuals that have the need. We looked at a lot of different cities that are modeling 24-hour response now. They're much bigger cities than we are. They have much bigger population and much bigger demand. And that's not to say that Redmond won't be there at some point in time, but this foundation is truly where policy needs to go, not just in the city of Redmond, but everywhere. We need to focus on how we affect the upstream and benefit those individuals so they don't end up in the places that we're finding them now. It's easy for us to respond to the emergent environment and take people to the hospitals or take them to a place for the night, but that doesn't guarantee anything's changed in the next 24 hours for them and they're not going to see them again. I think this step takes us in a direction that really sets the foundation so we have resources and tools available to us to support those individuals and get them the resources they need, correct, create the body within the city of Redmond that can connect with them on a regular basis to make sure that they're on track and continuing to move forward to a place of independence. We will have more demand. There's no doubt about it. But if we don't have the foundation set right, we will get overrun with that demand because it's constantly going to be coming and all we're doing is handling downstream effects rather than upstream effects. So in my opinion, this is the place to start. Really set the foundation strong, make sure we have the resources and the connections throughout the region that can support us and be able to connect these individuals that have needs to the appropriate resources.
Thank you. Following up on the budget allocation that council set forward, we had set the $35,000 aside for the contract consultant. And that kind of was glossed over, but did we actually utilize those funds? What happened to that portion of this project? It sounds like you all did that work internally and external services weren't rendered? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I mean, we set a policy direction and so I'm just kind of curious what happened there.
I'll speak, I don't know if it was a policy direction, you guys allocated $35,000 to be used for consultative services. As you heard in the presentation, both Ms. Allen and myself have done the work that we would be paying a consultant to basically come in and, I'll say redo or verify, looking at the overall Thrive program from this community care perspective. Staff is coming forward saying, this is the recommendation that we are making utilizing that $35,000 as part of the program. And we believe that the best use of that money is going to be for technology, i.e. either the Gelata and/or Apricot database, so that the Thrive program as a whole can communicate more effectively together with the information that is there. I'll speak from, you know, from my perspective, having done a lot of the legwork and research and different things into the space, we understand what programs are out there. We understand what is available. But as MSO Whitney just said, based upon Redmond's needs, we are bringing forward what we believe is what's best for the community at this point in time. So to be, you know, to borrow Jim's words, to be fiscally responsible, I don't think it's fiscally responsible to spend $35,000 on a consultant to come in and tell us what we've already determined based upon our staff that is actually in the field, you know, doing the actual work. You know, because, yeah, we can pay the money, they can come in, they say you can do X, Y, or Z, but if we don't have the funding for it or if it's not the right size for us, then essentially we spent $35,000 to be told something that is not what in the actual staff doing the works belief is what is best, you know, for us moving forward. And then if you look at the data points, where the need is, is on that, you know, that follow-up care. You know, as has been stated, we have the response capabilities. Where the support is needed for our existing staff is on that case management, that follow-up piece. And then speaking, you know, kind of from the police side of it is, yes, that person, you know, would, you know, potentially be able to respond to some of those calls if it were appropriate to supplement the efforts of Ms. Kroll that we currently have. So we're trying to get the, you know, the foundation and the framework right and then we can continue to build on it as we move forward.
Okay. I will, that just leads to more questions, so I will save them for the study session we will have. Thanks.
Mr. Fields, did you have a question?
This is not my main question, but just a quick follow-up to the consultant services. I remember, I believe it was council member Khan proposed a $35,000 or something in that category consultant study. But what I recall, it was to do an analysis of the calls that we received. It was to do an analysis of the kinds of calls and then inform you all as to what that, what that story tells. Is that, is that this $35,000 or is that a different $35,000?
It's that 35, so from the budget, that was, that was allocated.
So the work that you did in-house, was it an analysis of the calls that we received? A data analysis? Was that the work that you did?
Correct. You mean like the data that we shared on the screen?
Well, I think it was, I thought it was more about the types of calls and an analysis of, so to get a better sense of what the services' needs were. That's what I remember this for. So, and if you did that work, then I think it should be shared with council.
Chief, you're welcome at the table.
I'll speak to that just briefly. Yes, that was part of the, so. I'll speak to that just briefly. Yes, that was part of the, so this, the work group that came together. There was a couple of things that were identified. One is, yes, we have the data. We can pull and we can show what types of calls that we're currently responding to, when they're occurring and what level of engagement we're having as far as context. The, the other thing I would say that came of this was, was truly identifying the value of working together with bringing these three, three teams and maybe more, honestly, a little bit bigger than that, but and co-locating them together to have those communications. Many of the clients that we're seeing are overlapping clients and that's something we identify, too. That's, that's the technology ask within this, this is that we have one source that we can go to to see one client and understand what their needs are, not just and what their impacts are, not just in Redmond, but throughout King County and beyond. Those resources are available to us and that's part of the, the ask. But that was part of what was also identified in being able to collect this data because we're trying to collect it from three different data pools. And it'd be nice to have it in one spot and that's the technology ask.
Just at the risk of recycling, and thank you for the question. Appreciate it. And then the follow-up. We're really good at figuring out the call type and knowing what we're responding to. As MSA Whitney indicated, it's just that it's residing in a couple of different locations. And we want the ability to aggregate that so we can actually synergize and have a better response. But as Chief indicated, we did lean on his expertise. He has traveled the country extensively, survey and audit and other programs. So we did talk about that amongst ourselves. We want to make sure that we have best use of all those funds and resources. It's not to say that we don't want to spend money. Please send money my way. I'll spend it, I promise you. But we want to spend it appropriately and we think that if we lean on technologies, that we'll be able to give you the answers that you want.
So I'm going to say what other council members have said. I have some overall, I'm going to call them concerns, not questions, of where, where we think we're going. What is this? It, it sounds like we're trying to not just enhance services, but maybe make a more efficient use of the skills that we have in. And some people do some things and then others people do other things based on their focus and their skill set. So you're trying to improve services. It's not necessarily a volume issue, correct? It's more about, it's not like we're seeing more and more of this. We're, we're, we just want to handle it differently and better. Is that a fair statement?
No, we are seeing an increase.
So there's an increase in the number of people who need our help. And we're, and we're making, we're adjusting our staffing resources, both internally and externally giving consultant service and what did you call it, other expert or something?
And you're absolutely correct. And I think that we are seeing increase in all areas, right? And it's in every area. It's in teen mental health. It's in substance abuse. It's in mental health issues amongst adults. It is in housing and homeless homelessness, housing insecurity and homelessness. It's also in aging demographics. We are seeing a rapidly aging demographic within the city of Redmond that that is putting demand on the system. I will tell you, we have the data and I'm not trying to take away from anything else, but I'm going to speak specific for for MIH is that 80% of what we do, the workload that we have is an aging population that has, wants to age gracefully within their homes. And that's community health. All, all of this is community health. And if we can support community health in all aspects, because we have, we have a team of providers within the city of Redmond that are working together to address this, because many of them overlap also. We, we, we address a lot of that in support and we also address some of the demand that on growth that's happening. Because we're, we're, we're slowly taking some off the plate. And council member Stuart said it well, it is very difficult to measure, right? To have good understanding of what those impacts are. But we can see the clients that are coming in. We can see the clients that we are offboarding to some degree. Again, those clients that we offboard to independents, we, we say independent, but we're still touching those individuals to make sure that they are still have it, have the needs that they, to support them. So, so it's not a 911 call that engages that next, that next happening. It's actually a phone call pickup or maybe swinging by to check in on what, what, what there is there. But ultimately what we're doing is we're by, by solving the issues, we are creating more room for us to take on more demand that's coming.
Okay, and I, I'll just make two comments and I'll be, I'll finish up. Basically, what you just said, it, I feel it that going back to the analysis of the calls is really important. I mean, you just described that anecdotally 80% of the calls we get are for something. I think that information provided to council in a, in a very targeted and condensed format would be extremely helpful so that we know a sense of what we're talking about. The other thing that I think would be helpful when we get to a study session is examples, use cases, so to speak. Here's, here is a set of, what'd you call it, emergent care. And then, then you have the coordinators who do the follow-up work. So putting some life to that, putting some sort of human examples of what that means, I think would go a long ways towards helping us understand how to support you in budget and resources and policies, so.
And I think that's something we can do. Our, our, our subject matter experts at each of our, within each of our departments, I know they, they have stories of success that they can share. And they often stem from, from an emergent contact that is a notification back to the teams that are, are then engaging. And, and those success, success stories are what this is all about. That's why we, that's why we drive in this direction is because we know we can have impact. It's difficult to measure sometimes, but especially when it's new. But we're gathering more data and more data now that we, now that we have some time behind us in, in doing this work.
Great.
But those stories are great and we would love to share them. Just I caution because I, sometimes I don't want them to be the anecdotal story, right?
Yeah, no, and I, I understand that. And it would be just, it would just be useful to, to sort of get a picture. By the way, I hear coaches when I umpire baseball all the time yell at their players when they make a mistake, learn from it. So I don't think we should only look at successes. We should look at some things that were not successes as well. So, thanks.
And thank you all for your great questions. We are on time for end of our meeting. So I wanted to get a quick show of hands if we can stick around for the other four items, please. Thank you. That grace would be one very much appreciated. And then I did see Ms. Stewart has a question as well. So a question for council leadership, are you planning to schedule this in the short term and long term?
We will coordinate with this team and figure out when we can bring this back for further conversation. I know it's going to be a deep dive for us on policy, so.
Okay, in August, we don't have meetings, so.
Correct.
Okay, fantastic. So I did want to add a couple of items for next time, if you wouldn't mind bringing a couple of follow-ups for us. I heard a couple of questions that were great from council as well. I would love to know what expected timing of hiring and how the hiring will track with the need for those 3.0 positions. And then just the kind of a clarification on how you're approaching this. Is this going to be a mid-year budget adjustment? End of year reconciliation, what would that look like for us as it comes back to council? And I've got a couple of other questions, but I'll bring that to a study session as well. So thank you so much. Thanks, council. Ms. Forsythe?
I'm just going to add to on to that. If we have a new phone number for this, if we will, are planning to have a new phone number for folks to call for this. And if peer support is actually built into either of these positions, community respond or community care coordinator or whatever the contingency, if those are open to being peer level.
Clear as mud, folks. Excellent. I'll follow up with those questions for more specifics for you, too. All right, we're moving on to item number four. Homestretch, folks. Amendment number one to the October 2022 agreement between People of Color Against AIDS Network or PoCAND and the city of Redmond. And this looks like Mr. Whitney.
I'm going to stay. So, so this is an extension of a current contract that we have with PoCAND. It's a resource that we use right now for managing community health within the city of Redmond through our MIH team. Subject matter expertise and as a mental health professional, social services outreach has really good connections as an organization to resources that are available, Tri-County. We've been in contract with them for six months. It's been a great relationship that we've had with them and we would like to extend that through June of 2024.
And so the request is for consent on August 2nd. Are there questions about this item? That's a thumbs up. So we're moving through the business very quickly. I do have a comment on this. This is a particularly important mission. It's one of the organizations I personally support and it is especially meaningful for those of us who have lost family members due to AIDS. So, thank you. Looking forward to seeing this item. Number five is the $32,000 Criminal Justice Training Commission Officer Wellness Grant with Chief Low.
Good afternoon again. So we were awarded $32,000 from the Criminal Justice Training Center to expand our wellness program. Specifically, we submitted a grant application for what we termed Total Wellness, which is a five-component program. Because of the allocation of funds, they basically funded two portions of it. The two portions that were funded were for a nutritionist and for a financial advisor. So it is money to have those professional services provided to the commission staff of the police department. And then that will go along with the peer support and other wellness things that we already have in place. And then just as a preview, in 2024, we will be kind of revamping or re-refreshing, I guess I will call it, our entire wellness program so that it is much more comprehensive. It's not just peer support. It's not just Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu. It's going to include all of these other components to include financial, nutritional, health, et cetera. So total wellness, not compartmentalized, kind of like it is right now. And there is no matching requirement for the grant, so it's just acceptance of the money for those two particular services. So no impact to our general fund budget.
And for consent on August 2nd is the request?
Yes, please.
The council? Has a, Ms. Forsythe, do you have a question?
Two questions. One is, is this, well, this is a two-parter. Is it a one-time grant and how will we anticipate funds moving forward? Would it be a budget ask? And is there any duplication of services given our current human resources package of benefits?
No duplication of services, one-time monies at this point. I do not anticipate a budget ask for continuation of these particular services. The RFI that has been prepared is asking for the initial consultation and education to the staff member for them to carry it forward. So it would be, I don't want to say a one-off, but it would be a one-time thing for the employee to allow them to, I'll say self-manage or self-administer moving forward.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, chief. Getting grant money is great. Getting grant money for a specific purpose is great. This is two out of the five things in, in the bucket they asked for. I just, we can, we can take it if it's useful. And I, I guess I'm just curious, do you think that these services will be used by your team? Or is this part of the test in helping to inform your revised program next year?
They absolutely will be used by the team. We did seek input from our staff as we kind of put it together. So these are two areas that they are interested in. And again, we're looking at it more holistically for total, you know, like I said, total health. So financial health is important. But also, let me backtrack. Part of the nutritional health part of piece is also looking at blood work and different things. They have a true understanding of, I'll say, the DNA of the person. And then the nutritionist can then come in and teach them how to properly, you know, fuel their body, if you will, moving forward. So risk mitigation, it covers a lot of the different areas. But, but again, we're trying to approach this more holistically and then, like I said, total wellness.
Great, thank you. I mean, continuing on the theme of the night, went to your staff to ask what they wanted or what they knew about their roles. So love that. Thank you.
Mr. Fields?
So this is a one-on-one counseling? Is that what, and, and $32,000 could be roughly, I don't know, what is that, 200 hours of somebody's time? I don't know.
Yeah, give or take. Once we break it down, once we send the RFI out, we'll, you know, we'll find out what, you know, what that cost is. And if you say, you know, $16,000 for each particular service, we should be good.
Yeah, no, I'm in support of this, so thank you.
All clear for consent? I think we are. Thank you, sir. The next item is also with Chief Low, the Redmond Police Department, 2023 Q2 Crime Report.
Do you have the, can you run the?
Perfect.
Backed up by Captain Codes in the, in the audience here.
Teamwork.
Left field.
Can I make the request for this presentation to be shared after the meeting as well?
You can.
Okay, so we will start out by reminding council and the community that we have our public police dashboards available. The URL is there. If you go to the city's website, we have use of force dashboards for our school resource officer program for our use of force. We are in the latter developmental stages for our demographic information and our crime statistics. And that will be in our real time. If you're tracking, the state just released the 2022 crime information about a week and a half or so ago. So this particular presentation will be our quarterly update to council and the community as to what we're seeing related to crime over the past three quarters and has, and has, what has been asked from council before is we're given a three-year comparison so we can see kind of what's happened over the last couple of years. So then we look at the overall crime comparison, 21 to 22. I'm actually believe that's a typo there. So our violent crime has increased by 0.3%, which increase, but, you know, not super significant. Overall, if you look at Washington as recently released, almost 10%, so 9.6% is what the overall increase was in violent crime in the state of Washington. And when we look at King County, it was 4.6%. And if we look at our calls for service, specifically in this last quarter, we had a 14% increase in our calls for service between quarter one and quarter two for this particular year. And as we see, we've been kind of both up and down. Going back to 21, it was 12, eight and a half. So we are seeing a bit of an increase in our calls. When we look at our arrests, we're pretty much on track arrest-wise. I think there's eight, eight fewer arrests thus far this quarter when the data was pulled. So fairly consistent. Fortunately, we have seen a decrease in auto thefts of this quarter within the region that is, well, both, both in the region and within the state. That is a significant problem. Fortunately, we are, you know, on the downward trend a bit. And then the big thing that we've talked about a number of times in these presentations and throughout the years is the catalytic converter issue. It is still an issue, but we've seen a 52, almost 52 and a half percent decrease in catalytic converter thefts. I know I shared in a previous presentation that this is a national problem. And from a regional perspective, there was a significant case where individuals from a multinational theft ring were in fact arrested. So I'm confident that that is, has contributed both to what we're seeing here in Redmond, but what we're also seeing in the region for a decrease in this particular issue. The issue that remains, our, our biggest problem is our shoplifts. We're up almost 9% just quarter to quarter. That remains a significant issue here in Redmond and around the region. I won't pontificate as to all the contributing factors why, but that will continue to be a problem for the foreseeable future. We are working very closely with our retail partners. You know, many of them are, you know, large national corporations that have, you know, corporate policies that may or may not be. corporate policies that may or may not be, I'll say, congruent with how we would like it to be, but they are working with us and collaborating in that particular effort. And then on traffic collisions, we have seen a fairly significant increase in traffic collisions overall within the city. I know several of the council members have received emails, as has the mayor's office, in regards to modified exhaust systems. That is a big problem. While that's not a traffic collision issue, that is part of the traffic issue. We're looking at emphasis patrols for both the modified exhaust and in the high collision areas. We continue to do public education by way of our various social media outlets to remind individuals about slowing down, about not making, you know, red turns against solid arrows without stopping, et cetera. The things that we're seeing that, you know, may be contributing to some of these accidents. And then our enforcement efforts are in those, what's the word I'm looking for? High collision intersections and areas. And then with the property crimes, a 2% increase, still an increase, not as significant as a shoplift, but an increase nonetheless. And that's, you know, typically what we see here in Redmond is our property crimes and our shoplifts are our main crime areas. And then violent crime, while it shows a 3.8% increase, keep in mind, we're going from 26 to 27, so we have the issue of small numbers. So a couple additional crimes can make a significant impact statistically, because we are operating with, you know, with such a small data set.
Thanks so much. Speed round here. Questions for the chief and his team? Ms. Kurtser?
Just a quick comment. Thanks for alerting us about the dashboards that are available, and hopefully we can get that info out to the public so they can check that out. Glad to have those up.
Any other questions for the chief? No? The last item on our list is about National Night Out. I think that one's on your list as well.
Yes, to the community, National Night Out is coming up on August 1st. There is still time to register if you have not registered your party or event. If you go to our website, there'll be a form there where you can get it in. And I believe this Friday is the deadline to submit your location for inclusion. And if there's a request for council, police chief, fire chief, et cetera, you can include that as well. And we will do our best to make an appearance.
How many council members are planning to participate? No, I see at least four. I'm not sure, Ms. Khan looks like she's leaving on there. So it looks like we'll have about four council members for you? Four or five?
I'm certain Carson will also be.
Oh, yes, Mr. Garten, I should count him too, for sure. Fantastic, thank you. And so the deadline is Friday 21st at 5:00 p.m.?
Wednesday.
Wednesday the 25th at 5:00 p.m.
Saved by the bullpen again. Wednesday the 25th at 5:00.
We'll try and get it in early and then pretend to extend the deadline. That sometimes works. All right, great. Thank you so much, council, for the extra time today. And if there's no further items for good of the order, we are adjourned.